Call the meeting to order. Roll call of aldermen.
Alderman Hazel.
Here.
Alderman Kinsella.
Here.
Alderman Bitner.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Tyler.
Here.
Alderman Randall.
Here.
Alderman Anthony. Alderman Ovian.
Here.
Alderman Sillsby.
Here.
Alderman Dittelman.
Here.
Alderman Seibert.
Here.
Alderman White.
Here.
Alderman Galetti.
Here.
Alderman Musgrove.
Here.
Alderman Wiggington.
Aye.
Alderman Elmore.
Here.
Alderman Anthony is excused as daughter's graduating from Lindenwood tonight. At this time, ladies and gentlemen, if you, oh, roll call of department heads.
City Attorney Horner.
Here.
City Treasurer Hart.
Here.
Police Chief Clay. Fire Chief Poor.
Here.
Ken Vaughn.
Here.
Royce Carlisle. Jamie Matrat.
Here.
Tim Gregawitz.
Here.
Jim Schneider.
Here.
Lee Andrew Spearman.
Here.
Chuck Schaefer. Bob Sabo.
Here.
Debbie Belleville. Vanessa McCaskill.
Here.
Chuck Schaefer is excused, the chief, police chief is excused, assistant police chief is here on his behalf, and also Randy Smith is here on Royce's behalf, he's out of town on business for the city. With that said, if everybody please stand and join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no public hearing this evening. Public participation, we will start in just one second here. When I ask for you to, who are interested, please raise your hands, wait until you're recognized, keep your comments to two to three minutes after you step to the microphone and give your name, and try to keep it focused on items that are on the agenda or city business. And also keep in mind, good character. So at this time, I will open public participation and see who's interested this evening. Anyone? Yes ma'am?
Rose Wilson, 322 West I Street, didn't really want to be first. I'm here tonight because I have a great deal of concern about the lack of safety measures in the city of Belleville. It's been noted, in the city clerk's office, of some of the issues that are coming up there that are very disturbing to me. The clerk's office has a gate, it also has a door that indicates employees only, but yet it's been noted frequently that other people have access to this office, frequently. That office contains payroll, insurance information, and every citizen in Belleville writes a check to this office. So it is, was great, I am very disturbed by the issue and the fact that there is a pattern developing. We've had an issue with Mr. Hagberg having access to the vault, he was not employed by the city of Belleville. The next issue was a day of employment that was very mucky and foggy, he was there for a whole day, he was not employed by the city of Belleville. And now it's been noted that there are frequent visits by Mr. Hagberg in particular, in the clerk's office, for long periods of time, with a laptop. Also Mr. Ted Deeds, who was there last Monday, nobody else inside, behind the desk, on the inside of the city clerk's office. Please give me the courtesy to finish, because this is important.
Okay, I'm just saying, we're getting to the time.
You didn't abide by the time for Mr. Brown, so please let me finish. This is not ethical, this is the same political party, so there is an ethical question, I wonder what the Ethics Commission would have to say about it. So, I petition this council, and you, are you aware of this issue, Mayor Eckert?
Rose, I'm not, as I told everybody who does, or I do not, this is not question and answer tonight.
Well, okay, if you are aware of this issue, I petition you and the council to please sit down and draft an ordinance, or something to stop this practice. This is not allowed in the private sector such as Target or Walmart, this is not allowed in another government office, it is not allowed across the street at the news Democrat, it should not be allowed here, the citizens should, identity theft is in the paper every time, every day, there's something about identity theft. We need to safeguard the information of the citizens. There's forty thousand people, are forty thousand people going to be able to go in the clerk's office and do whatever they want to do, is there a FOIA for all of those visits?
Your point's well taken.
I'll go ahead and respond as well.
Okay, your point's well taken, thank you.
I will. No, I'm gonna go ahead and respond, because obviously there were some allegations just made, so now it's my turn. First of all, this is out of nowhere and totally off-base. This is a crazy dream of one person to try to hurt me, and that's okay, I understand, you can comment me and my character, however, Mr. Hagberg visits many city departments and is welcome at all of them, and he asks for information. Anybody in the public is welcome in my office at any time. When I walk somebody through my office, back to my office, that is not a problem or breach of security, nor would be anywhere. The public is one hundred percent welcome at any time to visit my office and personally meet with me as city clerk, that is my job. So those citizens that are most interested in what is going on in this municipality absolutely have the right to come sit down with me, their city clerk, and I'll be happy to do so at any time. And ma'am, it is my office, and if I wish to have somebody come visit with me in my office, that's my choice, my choice alone.
Okay, okay, okay.
The people elected me to represent them inside of that office, and I know you don't like me, and I don't really know why, but enough's enough from you, thank you.
Oh, hold it, hold it, that, okay.
I said enough's enough, and I put my foot down on this one.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next. Yes, sir.
Michael Hagberg, 701 Centerville Ave. I will state for the public, and for all to know, that I have never had a laptop in Dallas's office with any sort of data access, or anything to city documents, and to say that I frequently come in, I don't, you have to define frequently, but last time I was in, I was discussing the lack of response to FOIAs that I filed, and what Mr. Cook can do to go retrieve those public documents, public documents, and supply them as part of a FOIA. So, that's, all I'll say on that is that, you know, you can make all the allegations you want, I am not privy to any private information that's gonna get out there for identity theft. I will address a motion on tonight's agenda, 11A, the motion to appoint Mr. Sillsby as mayor pro temp. It's nice that you referenced the law, and I actually read the law, and it basically says that you don't appoint somebody, other than if the mayor's incapacitated, to do the city business, but if it's just to oversee the meetings themselves, you wait until the meeting begins, and then the members of that committee elect somebody as a chair, if the chair is absent from that meeting. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Back in the corner. Are you gonna speak, sir?
Stuart Lanner, 318 South 29th Street, Belleville. I noticed Alec McHugh's in here tonight, and I, maybe he could give me a tip on how to get a simple battery expunged from my record.
Okay. I'm gonna tell you, Mr. Lanner, you and I have had conversation after conversation about what's appropriate, what's appropriate dialogue at these meetings. Now I just told you, if it's city business, you're going out of bounds here again. Do you have anything to say tonight that pertains to the city's business? Because this is personal attack on somebody, or, now listen, I'm not gonna allow it. Now, what would you like to say? What?
What's the difference between what he is saying and what Mrs. Wilson said?
Well, first of all, you and I are elected, and we are, as elected officials, we do take certain amount of scrutiny.
Well, and Mr. McHugh petitioned himself to become elected as well, sir.
But he didn't make it, and he's not elected.
I'd just like to see everyone treated the same way, that's all I'm asking.
Mr. Lanner, do you have?
I was, I was drugged out of the city hall meetings twice on a kind of this dope dealer right across from Franklin School, and everything she said was a lie, and I was drugged out physically, and took an order to the police station, and one day, they told me to take off my shoes, because they were knotted, they were tennis shoes, so I throwed one down the floor, and it bounced and hit this poor little cop in the ankle, and like, he acted like he got a broken ankle, so they charged me with battery, but they didn't bring it to court or nothing, now I got a battery on my record. And I'm just wondering how a guy can get off of a felony, when I can't even get off of a simple battery, because some cop says he got a little bruise on his ankle, I don't even think he got a bruise, it just bounced off his ankle, you couldn't even hurt anybody with a tennis shoe, but that ain't really what I want to talk about.
Well, you've used most of your time, Mr. Lanner, so you better go quick.
I got a quick something here, though. I used to go coyote hunting on proposed side of Shrine, and saw no sign of flooding, as most ground is at least a hundred feet off creek bottom. I wouldn't trust anything Catholic Church says, Bishop Braxton says, St. Elizabeth should move out of Belleville. When the bishop first came to Belleville, he spent a hundred fifty thousand to remodel his house, had a birthday party not too long ago at St. Clark County Country Club, and was gonna give the money to charity, so far, nobody's seen a dime of it. Okay, have a good evening.
Anyone else? If there's no one else, I will close public participation. Okay. At this time, we will go into presentations, recognitions, and appointments. Todd Peak from Tuvinal Wade Merchant will present the TWM Engineering and Surveying Scholarship Award to Michael Cardy of Belleville. Is Michael here? Come forward, Michael.
I'm here. Todd Peak, if you, if I don't know you, I'm with Tuvinal Wade Merchant. Every year, TWM gives away college scholarships to local high school students from surrounding communities. This year, Michael is one of the winners, one of the three, he is a Bellevue West student, and going to Arkansas State University, I believe, and all of the prospective applicants are pursuing a degree in engineering or land surveying. So it's my honor to present Michael Cardy with a one thousand dollar check for. Thanks for the time.
Thank you, Todd, thanks to TWM, and Michael, congratulations, best of luck on your future schooling, and when you get that engineering degree, come talk to us, or maybe between hands, sometimes in the summers, or sometimes there's internships that some of the college students, if TWM doesn't have something for you, we might have something here at the city, we do it, we do it almost every season with one or two, and it's been beneficial to us, the city, and to the individuals, get some work experience, so best of luck to you. Good. Okay, at this time, I'd like to ask this young lady to come forward. Couple weeks ago, you might have seen in the paper, where the city of St. Louis, this region, Women of Achievement, recognized Carol Bartle for her many, many, many acts of kindness and volunteerism over a long span of years. Carol was the only one this year, sixty years of this program, sixty years old, Carol, come forward, I read this, and, and, I'm not saying the East Side hasn't had some recipients, but the vast majority are in the term. They had nine out of sixty years.
Six hundred and two.
Six hundred and two of them, they had nine, so you're a pretty lead group. So tonight, I, and I think, all the people who were on the 200 anniversary committee, and particularly the executive committee, I think all of us knew Carol, but we really didn't get to know Carol's dynamite ability to get things done, until we saw that eighteen months of energy, and fundraising, and everything she did, to make the 200-year festivities, and not just the weekend, but from one thing after another, after another, Carol was giving the guidance and the leadership that was just fabulous. So this proclamation, the states, whereas Carol Bartle was honored as one of this year's Women of Achievement in the St. Louis region on May 5th, 2015, and whereas Women of Achievement is the oldest ongoing program in the St. Louis area, whose sole mission is to honor and recognize the volunteer service and leadership of women, and whereas since its founding in 1955, as the awards program by the St. Louis Globe Democrat, and later becoming the St. Louis Women of Achievement, non-for-profit organization in 1993, Women of Achievement has dedicated itself to honoring women volunteers in the St. Louis metropolitan region, including Metro East Illinois, who positively impact the community. And whereas in the past sixty years, the St. Louis Women of Achievement Award has been given to six hundred and two women, representing diverse cultures, roles, and accomplishments, who have generously donated their time, talents, and resources in the areas such as, but not limited to, education, arts, health, and human services, youth, and family, philanthropy, social justice, and advocacy. And whereas the Women of Achievement Honor Reeds have contributed to the mission of more than five hundred and fifty non-for-profit organizations in the community, and their service has impacted thousands of lives, changing the culture and social landscape of the region. And whereas volunteering is a vital part of the community and the economy of Belleville and the Metro East, and the survival of the community relies on volunteer services, Women of Achievement is committed to the ongoing public recognition of the influential impact and selflessness efforts of local women volunteers. Whereas Carol Bartle was honored in the area of community betterment, for her volunteer efforts in the Metro East for nearly thirty years, and whereas Carol Bartle has volunteered for numerous organizations such as Ardenne Square, American Cancer Society, American Heart Association, Bellevue 200, SWIC Foundation, Family Hospice, Masterworks Corral, Zonta Club, Bethany Place, Women's Crisis Center, Lancer Improvement Association for District 201, and most recently, Carol has pledged to help raise funds for the construction of the September 11th Memorial Walkway in Southern Illinois. Now therefore, I, Mark W., after mayor of City of Belleville, do hereby recognize and congratulate Carol Bartle, as a 2015 Women of Achievement Honor Reed, commend her for nearly thirty years of volunteer efforts in our community. Carol is much overdue, and as we saw again this weekend, with Ardenne Square, she has a key hand in that committee, and when you see the tireless efforts and the smooth operation of that beautiful weekend end this year, it's perfect timing, it's only fitting that we take a moment to pause and thank you. Okay, we have the, the next thing, recommendation to reappoint the following members of Historic Preservation Commission. I'd ask for a motion for, this is for fiscal year 2015 to 16, Andy Gah, John Hunter, Jack LaSheen, Douglas Luna, Ashley Pollack, and Ryan Wallace. Motion by Alderman Schmidt, second by Alderman Wiggington, do I hear any discussion? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Bitner.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
That's it? Galetti, good, okay, I'm sorry. Motion's carry for the reappointments. Approval of the minutes to the council meeting, May 4, 2015, what's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion.
Make a motion, Alderman Bitner, to accept and file?
Yes.
Second by Alderman Seibert, is that right?
Yes.
Do we have any discussion on the minutes? All in favor of accepting the minutes and filing them for the record, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have claims, payroll, and disbursements, what's your pleasure?
Motion to file and receive the claims, payroll, and disbursements.
Motion to accept the claims and pay the claims, payroll, and disbursements, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Ovian, do I hear any discussion on the claims? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Bitner.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Elmore.
Motion carries. I'd ask for a motion to appoint Alderman Sillsby as mayor pro temp during my absence from the city from May 23rd, 2015, to June 3rd, 2015, pursuant to the section as written, I'm sorry, we'll come back to it, I skipped over, I'll just may finish this here now, and we'll come right back, it was my error. Pursuant to section, as stated in here, 3 dash point one dash thirty-five dash thirty-five A of the Illinois Municipal Code, 65 ILS, ILCS, five slash three point one dash thirty-five dash thirty-five A, to perform the duties and possesses all the right and powers of the mayor during such period while remaining entitled to vote as an alderman. I'd ask for a motion.
So move your aye.
Motion by Alderman Schmidt, second by Alderman Dittelman. Let me just explain, I'm gonna be unavailable for about nine days, as it says, due to my oldest son's wedding, and I'm gonna be unavailable. So it's only fair that if something were to come up, there's two meetings, and if there would be, our staff manages things wonderfully, I have no problem. I will be checking in, or by email, et cetera, however, if there would be something come up, a severe storm, or something of this nature, and someone had to make decisions, I did talk first with Alderman Seibert and Musgrove, the top two senior aldermen, and they preferred not to take this challenge on, and Alderman Sillsby is the third senior alderman, and he had agreed that if this council approves it, that he will be available to give the leadership, not only at the meetings, but if there were some unprecedented situation that did occur. So that's why this is worded this way. When I've gone out of town, just for a weekend to Chicago, or someplace, and I can be back in three and a half hours, that's not, that's not a concern, but it's a little different situation this time, and I just feel like, to cover the city adequately, that's why I'm recommending this.
I would just like to address the statute, section 3.1 dash thirty-five dash thirty-five has two sections, and it addresses two different circumstances. The first is what we have here, where you, the remaining members of the council would appoint a mayor pro temp. The second is when you would appoint a temporary chairman, and the distinction is, section A, which were, would be operating under here, addresses a, when the mayor is quote temporarily, temporarily absent because of incapacity to perform official duties, but the incapacity does not create a vacancy in office. So that's, the case law has drawn the distinction between the two sections to be when the mayor is absent out of town, or simply, versus simply absent from the meeting. And what we have here is the former, not the latter. So it's prudent to appoint somebody to act as a mayor pro temp, as the mayor indicated, to address any issues that would arise outside of the mayor running of a meeting. And that's contemplated by the statute, that's contemplated by the case law. The municipal authorities suggest that it applies to temporary absence, or disability that doesn't create a vacancy, because if it were a legal disability, it would create a vacancy in office. Here we have the incapable of performing the duties for a short period of time, it's merely a temporary absence, so I would recommend that the council would take this action in compliance with section 3.1 dash thirty-five dash thirty-five A.
And as I said, just to clarify, I'm not just skipping away on a vacation, it's my oldest son, who's in the military, it's, he's getting married, so we're gonna be gone for a number of days, okay? Yes, sir?
I just have a question for the city attorney. Mr. Horner, would it be necessary to record the timeframes on those dates?
Well, we got from the, we got from the.
Well, we have the dates, but in terms of the timeframe.
You could add in there if you wanted to, make it 12:01 a.m. to 12:00 p.m.
It's just a question, okay, if that would be necessary to include.
Yeah, I would, I would read this to, to apply to the entirety of those days, so it would be, I would interpret it to be from 12 a.m. on the, on the initial, the initial day to 12 p.m. on the, on the last day.
Alrighty, any other questions? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Bitner.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Stane.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Motion carries. Let's flip back, since I missed the treasurer's report, let's ask for a motion to accept and file the treasurer's report from April 2015. Do I hear a motion? Alderman Schmidt makes the motion, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Dittelman, do I hear any conversation or questions about the treasurer's report? Hearing none, all in favor of accepting and filing, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now we'll go on, the next motion that was under the, motion from administration, was to authorize myself to participate by electronic means in the special meeting on May 26, 2015, pursuant to section seven of the Open Meetings Act. Okay, a motion, and the second was by, motion by Alderman Schmidt, second by Alderman Tyler. This is not, I'm not looking at this to vote, I'm looking at this to be available via Facebook, Rich says he can hook me up to the television, and I'll be down here, so that I can be present by electronic means, so that if there's questions, the bottom line is this, the Shrine Project and the TIF, I have been the, with going, having two different directors of economic development the last couple of years, I have been the person who has been intimately involved in this project for two solid years. So if there's questions that arrive, that final vote, or a need to inject something, it would just be for dialogue or question-type interaction in the meeting. I'm not doing this for the meeting, June 1st, the regular council meeting, I just felt it was appropriate that I might be, make myself available that evening to handle any questions pertaining to that long-going project. Alderman Galetti?
What if there's a tie vote in the council? Are you gonna be able to vote?
If I've given up the mayor pro temp, I don't know if I'd have a vote. I would say no, either.
So what would happen if there's a tie vote, and it would be happening at the next meeting when you're here?
We'd have to.
I think it would fail, wouldn't it?
We could bring it back again, though, right?
Well, you know, I.
This, this motion was intended for the mayor to be there and participate as an informational resource, in case there was any questions or anything, or somebody wanted information, for purposes of, of participation in the meeting, for voting per se, I think that the council needs to create its rules and procedures associated with that pursuant to section seven of the act. And that was, but I think under the circumstances, this was done just to afford access if there was a question or information necessity would arise.
Alderman Schmidt.
Can we amend it to allow the mayor to vote if need be?
I don't think that would be appropriate. I mean, I mean, we've given, you've just given, I've asked you to share with Alderman Sillsby, the ability for him to give the leadership if necessary in my absence. I think that night, providing all the technology works, and I can get through, okay, we think it will, but you never know, there could be a glitch, I think it's just strictly for the purpose of questions that might, you know, need to be raised.
All right.
Yes, sir?
I'm gonna ask it again, what if there's a tie vote? What happens?
I'd have to refer to some research by the city, I mean, I would hope that isn't the case.
Yeah, if there's, if there's a tie vote, under those circumstances, and the absence of the rules and procedure of the council, then, and the fact that, that you've already appointed the mayor pro temp, the mayor doesn't, doesn't intend to vote.
What I'm, what I'm saying is, if we're voting on something that night, and it's a special meeting, so we're voting on the creation of this TIF, does the TIF get created if there's a tie vote?
No, if there, if there was a tie vote, then the motion would fail.
It would fail, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Horner, also, since Alderman Sillsby is mayor pro temp, does that mean he's acting as mayor and not as alderman, can he actually vote?
The statute provides that a mayor pro temp still holds the right to vote as the alderman.
And are you saying it may be, this is as an option, it may be appropriate for this council to make a motion to allow the mayor to vote via electronically?
Well, you would have to promulgate rules of procedure to allow anybody to attend and participate as a voting member. You know, what we have here is, we have an action that you've already taken that recognizes there's going to be an absence. Well, you would have to promulgate rules of procedure to allow anybody to attend and participate as a voting member. You know, what we have here is we have an action that you've already taken that recognizes there's going to be an absence. You don't have rules of procedure associated with electronic participation. That's something that may be addressed in codification. But what we're, what we're trying to do is still provide an informational resource, and obviously, the mayor is that, but it would require you to, to pass rules of procedure that allow, and it would have to fall within the defined exceptions for electronic attendance where you're gonna participate. We didn't anticipate-
I understand, I understand the intent. I'm just not sure if I understand the answer about, should we like make a motion to- I don't think we can have it both ways. I, I don't think we can have it both ways. I think, I, I think what Garrett's trying to explain is, some of the aldermen, for a long time, have expressed an interest in looking into this. I think there's a lot of research, a lot of discussion has to be for a permanent policy or ordinance to be, to be established. I'm just simply saying that, as the chief executive officer of the city, the past two years, I have been the sole person on a, on a weekly basis involved in the Shrine Project, and, and I hate it that I happen to be gone on this given night, but I- I understand, I understand the intent. Alderman Randall?
Thank you, Your Honor. Having read the statute, my interpretation would be is that having this motion already passed, appointing Mayor Sillsby as mayor pro temp, you have removed yourself from that position during that period of time. As such, you would no longer have a right to vote.
And I, I agree.
Right. And no provision could be made to establish such-
And I'm asking here, is the consideration of allowing me to electronically be present at the meeting as a day-to-day staff person who, who operates, runs the city, to be here as a, as a question or to, to possibly to make clarification on comments that might come down to that final questions of the TIF?
And, and that's, I, I didn't see that as being an issue here. I think the issue was raised as, you know, what happens, okay, if there was a tie vote? Okay, well, motion would then fail. And then there was talk about maybe, you know, having a provision there for you to vote, and that would not be possible, having already, you know, passed-
I'm not the attorney, but I don't see that to be a possibility. And I, I wasn't asking for that. Yes, sir?
Your Honor, thank you. I feel that we're walking into troubled waters by allowing us, opening the doors to allowing us to vote electronically in our absence without a lot of discussion.
Well, and that's why I didn't ask for the vote.
Yes.
I wasn't asked, that's why we're not asking for the vote. I think that takes a lot more discussion, and I think there's a lot of research that we need to do before we'd ever go, and some cities, and I'd like to research what cities have done that before we'd ever go that way and look at some of the situations. Alderman Schmidt?
But, okay, let's say there was a tie vote that night and it failed at that special meeting, would the TIF be done with forever? How, how would this-
I think, I think Garrett would have to research that. I think, you know, whether or not it can be called-
There's, there's provisions for reconsideration and that, but that's all hypothetical at this point. I mean, I, I think we ought to await the outcome of the meeting.
Yeah, I would, I would hope, I would hope that we're positive and move forward. We've worked very hard for a long time. So, the motion is right now, do we, okay, let me refresh. We have a motion and a second here?
Yes.
Who made the motion again?
I made the motion.
And the second was by Alderman?
Tyler.
I'm sorry, Tyler Scott. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to allow me to, to listen in and be a part of the meeting by electronic means solely for the purpose of questions or comments. Okay, roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Elmore.
Motion carries. Okay, we got everything on page two accomplished. Move to the next page. Motions from Finance, Alderman Sillsby. Is that okay, Alderman Finance?
I'm sorry.
Page three, I'm sorry.
Your Honor, I make a motion on behalf of the Finance Committee to approve Windstream agreement for the new police department in City Hall. So moved.
Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman Seibert. Discussion on this particular item. Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Motion carries, Alderman Sillsby.
Motion to approve an agreement with Golden Images LLC for scanning ordinances. So moved.
Motion by Alderman Sillsby, who's the second?
I second.
Second by Alderman Bittner. Discussion? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Elmore.
Motion carries, Alderman Sillsby.
Motion to approve the budget amendments as recommended by the finance director. So moved.
Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second. Second by Alderman Tyler. Discussion? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Elmore.
Motion carries. Alderman Sillsby.
Motion to approve an agreement with Golden Images LLC for scanning ordinances. So moved.
Motion by Alderman Sillsby, who's the second?
I second.
Second by Alderman Bittner. Discussion? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Elmore.
Motion carries. Alderman Sillsby.
Motion to approve the budget amendments as recommended by the finance director. So moved.
Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second. Second by Alderman Tyler. Discussion? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Elmore.
Motion carries. Alderman White.
The next motion is to create no parking on Benton Street between Sycamore and Sheel from January through June, on the odd-numbered side, and July through December on the even-numbered side. So moved with the proper ordinance to be drawn.
Motion by Alderman White, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Kinsella, do I hear discussion? All in favor of this motion to have the proper ordinance drawn signify by saying aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Alderman White.
Next motion is to make permanent the stops at South First Street and West Washington Street. So moved with the proper ordinance to be drawn.
Motion by Alderman White, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Randall. Discussion on this? All in favor of approving this motion to have the stop signs be permanent at South First and West Washington and have the proper ordinance drawn signify by saying aye? Opposed? Motion carries. I'm sorry?
Well, I voted no.
You voted no, we'll notify, we'll recognize that. Okay, last one.
The last motion is create no parking on West Washington and South Side, and South, on South Side between Twenty-second and South Twenty-third Street. So moved, Your Honor, with proper ordinance to be drawn.
Motion by Alderman White, where's the second? Second by Alderman Tyler. Any discussion? This is running alongside the Girls' Dorm on Lindenwood, and it's felt that that street has a lot of traffic, people, and for fire, really a fire lane, actually, it's, really boils down to. If there's no further discussion, all in favor of this motion to have the proper ordinance drawn signify by saying aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Streets and Grades, Alderman Seibert.
Yes, Your Honor, I have eight motions, all pertaining to engineering and the street department, and I'd like to read them all and have voted on this one.
Does anybody have a problem with that? Proceed.
Motion to approve low bidder forty contracting in the amount of one hundred and thirty-five thousand, three hundred and forty-four dollars for the 2015 ditching program. Motion to approve low bidder JTC Petroleum in the amount of one hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars for the 2015 oil program. And motion to approve low bidder Bealman in the amount of forty-six thousand, eight hundred dollars for 2015 chip program. Motion to approve Volter to perform construction inspection services for North Illinois streetscape, not to exceed eighty-nine thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine dollars and twelve cents. Motion to approve Keel Engineering in the amount of forty-one thousand, three eighty-one fifty-five to perform engineering services for East Bell Avenue. A motion to approve RJN Group in the amount of one thousand, five hundred dollars to perform engineering services for Phase Two Stormwater Permit. A motion to approve Cascaskey Engineering Group in the amount of one hundred and thirty-six thousand, six hundred and ninety-six dollars and four cents to perform engineering and design services for East A Street Res servicing. And a motion to approve the mayor's signature on IDOT permanent application for Richland Creek Greenway Trail. So moved, Your Honor.
Motion by Alderman Seibert, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman White. Do I hear discussion on these motions coming from Streets and Grades? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Elmore.
Motion carries. We move on to Communications.
Twelve B, Children's Home Aid Society 5K Run Walk and 1K Family Fun Run, August eighth, 2015. Communication from Children's Home and Aid Society requesting permission to host their annual 5K run slash walk and 1K family fun run on Saturday, August eighth, 2015, starting at eight AM, beginning at one twenty East A Street.
Do I hear a motion to approve this request? Motion by Alderman Schmidt, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Tyler, do I hear any discussion regarding this communication? All in favor of it signify by saying aye? Opposed? Motion carries. We have no petitions this evening. Resolutions, I'd ask for a motion to read by title only, Resolution thirty-two thirty-one and thirty-two thirty-two. Motion by Alderman Kinsella, second. Second by Alderman Dittelman, do I hear any discussion about resolutions reading by title only? All in favor signify by saying aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
Fourteen A, Resolution number thirty-two thirty-one, a resolution amending the annual budget of the city of Belleville, Illinois, for the fiscal year beginning on the first day of May, 2015, and ending on the thirtieth day of April, 2016.
Do we hear a motion for the first one? Motion by Alderman Schmidt, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Seibert. Discussion? Roll call on Resolution thirty-two thirty-one.
Hazel. White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I hear a motion to, we already, okay, we're gonna read the next one?
Fourteen B, Resolution number thirty-two thirty-two. A resolution amending the annual budget of the city of Belleville, Illinois for the fiscal year beginning on the first day of May, two thousand fifteen, and ending on the thirtieth day of April, two thousand sixteen.
So moved. Motion by Alderman, Elmore, do I hear a second?
Second.
By Alderman, oh, yeah, okay, Roger, next. Uh, any discussion on the Resolution thirty-two thirty-two? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Motion's carried. I ask for a motion to read by title only, ordinance number seventy-eight fifty-seven and seventy-eight fifty-eight. Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman Wiggington, uh, to read those two ordinances by title only. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Fifteen A, Ordinance Number seventy-eight fifty-seven. Ordinance prohibiting the use of groundwater as a potable water supply by the installation or drilling of potable water supply wells or by any other method.
Motion to approve ordinance seventy-eight fifty-seven.
First of all, let's get a second.
No second.
Second by Alderman Bittner, motion was by Alderman Sillsby. Question, open for question.
Is this, will this end up affecting, uh, irrigation?
Eric, Eric, okay.
No, this is strictly, uh, related to potable water, so they're, they're, uh, trying to do an environmental cleanup at that site to get a no further remediation letter from the EPA, and one of the steps is to allow us, you know, nobody drills potable wells mostly in the, you know, especially in this area. We've not done one citywide because we do have some rural areas of the city that, that do have wells, but this just is one step that they need to take. It won't affect any irrigation or watering lawn or anything like that. It's, it's simply, uh, you can't drill a well within that boundary for potable water.
Right, and I, and I understand, you know, you're looking in at the current city boundaries, but annexing a lot of property that we look at annexing. Just wanna make sure because listed in the ordinance is potable uses as such, but not limited to, and so it's the not limited to that I was concerned about on how this might affect irrigation or water for gardening, and, and I was satisfied with the fact that it wasn't going to, it wasn't going to harm any existing uses. But I wanted to get that clarified on whether or not.
Did that answer your question? I mean, did I answer your question?
Well, I guess if I, if I know that it will not affect water usage for such as irrigation or, or gardening or-
The intent is to, it's for well water, yeah. Just in that specific boundary that's, and I, I laid the, the ordinance, uh, on your desk this evening because the, the, uh, the map had not been attached, and I was, uh, just, uh, uh, an omission.
Yeah, I, I read that.
Okay, so, uh, we have a motion and a second, correct? Okay, roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, do we have a motion for our ordinance, uh, seventy-eight fifty-eight?
Fifteen B, no, I'm not.
Okay, go ahead.
Fifteen B, Ordinance Number seventy-eight fifty-eight. An ordinance amending Chapter Seven of the Business License Code.
I need a motion to read by, he read it by title only, to approve this motion. Motion by Alderman, motion by Alderman Sills, Alderman Sillsby to approve seventy-eight fifty-eight. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Schmidt. Do I hear any discussion on seventy-eight fifty-eight?
Yeah, what exactly are we amending there?
Actually, we're cleaning up some language primarily. The, the, in the old, in the existing ordinance, there was, over the years, years ago, we renamed some departments and some stuff. Years ago, health housing used to also do zoning, but the zoning expertise really falls under the land use planners, and it, it went back several years ago since I've been mayor to the Economic Development Office. So it's always been in the statute, and it's, this is one of those types of things, it would eventually be cleaned up with the codification, but, um, and this asked that we might do it sooner just for some clarification to the public. All right? So we have a motion and we have a second, correct?
Yes.
Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.